So we need a motion to sign the warrants.
Subtle.
Second. Do you have that, Debbie?
Yep.
Give them a minute to... Who made the motion?
Me.
Rachel.
Was I.
Who made the second?
Dan.
Dan. So you got that?
Yep.
All in favor?
If Laura doesn't show up, we can't do this.
I don't think we could.
We could press not that much on the...
Sticky look at it.
Oh, sticky.
Sticky.
Just the white side.
Alright. So we need a motion to... Well, in a best...
Yes, thank you very much for that.
We need a motion to...
I love these words already, don't I?
To accept the minutes.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from February 6th, 2018.
I'll say...
2019, actually, so it needs to be a minute.
Yes, 2019. But let's look and see what the...
I didn't have my 14 hours of war.
The minutes actually say 2019, so that was just on the agenda.
Is that okay? So it's just on the agenda?
Yes.
Alright.
That's fine. Second was Jason?
Yep.
All in favor? Alrighty. Food ordinance draft revisit public hearing. There's been some inquiry on which ordinance we're going to go with, the one that the lawyer just kind of handed us that had been written, or the one that Karen Brokaw worked on by reviewing other neighboring towns. Felicia had sent us an email wanting us to revisit some of the language because the lawyer version, simplified version, did not include the sale of things at farmer's markets. So I believe that we're not finished with which ordinance we're going to present. But we do want to know whether May 1st would work for us for a public hearing and then right into a special town meeting, right before, just right before our meeting. So public hearing, special town meeting, and then our meeting.
On this one?
All together, on May 1st.
On this one, Carol, the lawyer's draft in the chair?
Yes.
This ordinance shall be enforced by the code enforcement officer.
Right. So I think we need to relook at Karen's version, because I believe she looked at the tries and other neighboring towns.
That's right.
And it was a little, a little different.
And there were some questions.
That's so. What we're going to need to do is put this on the agenda for next. Felicia's doing more research, so let's table this to discuss vote that will happen.
Absolutely.
A few of them to look at for the next meeting.
Yes.
So I don't know if we need a motion to table?
Yes.
But how about we do one?
I would, I would, but we table this until the next meeting till we are cognizant of more specific language.
Second. All in favor? So, next, some court abatement. I believe there was, um, and... Do we have to sign it like this, David?
Yep.
Jim made some corrections on this abatement, and he needed a clean copy. So my problem with the thing is...
I would agree, it should be, yeah.
He mistakenly drew line through this, which was already approved. So, okay, here's what happened. See, we approved this and signed it, and he mistakenly did that, so he'd like us to just re-sign one.
Re-sign one.
So you need a motion to re-sign.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? There you go.
Thank you.
Yes. Alright. Liquor license for Laura?
Yep.
Hi.
Hi.
Well, we've got your license here, so, um... Do we have questions for her?
Well, just so you understand what the concept is, is, um, you know, I have the brewery and the restaurant. The restaurant is going to, Loda is moving here to, and then lease the restaurant and manage and run the restaurant. So to do that, she's going to have a license in her name, the liquor license.
Right.
So that's what this is about.
Could, could you explain to me the resident alien status?
Oh, so, um... So I took my test, and I'm just waiting for my oath, um...
Oh, great.
Appointment, basically, but because of the government checking on it, it's been sort of delayed.
Okay, when will that happen? Do you know?
Uh, they can't tell me yet. That's not a question they can answer, but...
Yeah, I have no problem. It's just that I question whether we can give this...
Legally.
To legally to a resident alien. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, I think that the state would, it would stop at the state level if that's the case.
Okay.
We don't have a problem with it.
Yes.
I imagine it would be a state.
Yes.
And we're under new management at the state? I'm sure that is just...
That's true. We have a board that already has states, and it's a little bit more liberal for many of us to be...
I think what she's saying, we just don't want to give you false hope at this point.
Yes.
You know, unless the state kicks it back.
Yes.
We're fine with that.
Yes.
It's just we don't know how the state's going to handle that.
To be honest, my wife is a resident alien also.
Will you say it again?
My wife is a resident alien.
Seriously?
I don't think it's...
It shouldn't hold it back at all.
Yeah. Well, I never know whether, you know, with the handling of liquor and that kind of,
you never know what kind of silly, stupid stuff gets thrown in it.
I think we just defer, we defer to the state regulations on it, and we can sign off on it, and then we send it to the state.
Yeah, we're fine with that. We're fine, okay. So, I wish you luck, I wish you...
Yes.
Thank you for coming to Quebec.
And what a great new idea.
Yes.
That's good.
I'm really excited to...
We're happy for you.
So just, just serving beer and wine, just beer and wine. So do we have a motion to accept the liquor license?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? And hopefully the stable...
Follows suit.
Follows suit. I think Renee asked us to make sure we could give this to you tonight, because you were off somewhere, you had it out.
Yeah, I'm going back to DC tomorrow, unfortunately.
Oh, this is a nice time.
Wow.
I don't know, we're born there, however. We're just in the big municipal office. I'm glad you're with Laura. Date issue, I can...
It's beautiful, but I'm looking forward to being here.
Oh, yes.
And go back to DC with warm weather for a little while, right?
Yeah. Geez, I'm sitting here... I put down Washington County, I'm just about to put down Washington by city.
It's snowing.
Yeah, there's some going tonight, coming through, so be careful.
Yeah, you may have to be very careful.
Town, oh... Fill all this out if we're giving anything.
This diet is making you very active, Mr....
Ah, thank you, yes. It's not diet.
Whatever.
So is that what you're doing with the other part? The bigger part?
Um, the bigger part, I'm moving the brewery into, so I'm expanding the brewery.
Okay, so the whole, the restaurant is a one and one?
Yes, all, the brewery would be totally out of the restaurant, and that's why, uh, up until recently, I was able to serve beer...
That's why I had to fill it out.
Under a brewer's permit.
I gotta fill that one.
And now, I can't, so I have to have a liquor license for the restaurant.
Okay, so it's separate?
Yeah, separate.
Great.
Well, good.
Put my food on the appetizer that we serve at the restaurant.
Oh, good.
Great.
So what's our brewery looking for?
Good.
And where does this all go to start?
Uh, April. April 15th.
Oh, good day, good day.
Well, that's when the lease starts. Like, yeah, we had this...
Just something good and heavy to do.
That's right. We'll probably all be there.
All got to do some heavy lifting on the 15th.
Well, we're definitely going to have an open house, so everybody can see the new brewery.
Oh, good, yeah.
We're making changes to the kitchen.
Oh, good, that'd be exciting, good.
Yeah, so we're kind of...
Yeah, we'll have a little case of the minister.
Good.
So you should all come in.
Good.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, we've always had the plant, you know, the bootable.
Good. Great.
Thank you.
Well, goodbye.
So they're giving tickets for you now, make sure... So you're driving back?
Uh, just to Bangor, and then I'll fly you.
You're going to fly tomorrow?
Well, it's just a little snow.
A little snow.
I think the...
It's gonna be nasty here.
Really? I mean, you think it's...
Sounds like you're leaving from...
You should check. I mean, I mean, why drive all that distance to...
Be canceled, right? Yeah, but they don't...
How often do they close the airport?
Not for that, don't worry about it.
No. It's more wind than...
The last time I was in New York, it was windy, that was, I think it was last week.
It's, it's often windy.
Often windy.
Economic, you know, a lot of...
Yes, I can love that.
See them often?
Well, thank you very much, and welcome to the town.
Big job, good.
Yes, and welcome, Laura. Well, anytime, come to our little meetings.
Right. That's it?
Yeah, that's it. Okay.
Bring some samples, every other Wednesday, you can do a show with some supply.
Alright, I'll see you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Bye-bye.
Thank you all.
See ya. Good luck.
Okay, so you want to hear about broadband?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Denise and I were here, and we had guests with Kate Chance, Gretchen Mead, Dean Preston, and this couple of guys from Pioneer Broadband. And I can safely say it was probably the first time that we became very enthusiastic, mostly because they presented us with a concept of doing broadband in town that seemed really viable, doable, and something we could all get behind. And as you probably all know, I have been very much in favor of being inclusive in this effort. I want to include Tresket, Whiting, and Edmonds. Dean Preston came and talked about the unorganized territories. And then somebody mentioned Cutler, which would also be part of it. And it's all seems really doable. The way Pioneer works it is to, now, correct me if I'm wrong, Denise, because I'm bad at this. It, they will hire a utility group in Riverside Electric, which will be the main power source. And then all of the service, people who get their service, will still be able to get it through Spectrum or broadband or whatever. But it will be, now, $25 per customer to the utility. And that would service a loan that the towns would have to take out. And the loan would be paid over a period of years. We have to make sure everybody's on board for this, for this loan to happen. It probably will not happen for another three years by the time we get working on it. Dean Preston did mention that there were some funds available for us, and he would see what he could do about that. Let me read these notes from Denise, which I think are important to have. Theoretically, no taxpayer dollars will be needed for the project unless the town or the territories guarantee its call for the loan. Grants may not be the best option for Quebec, as a large number of internet users, especially in the village along 189, are served at or above the required minimum of 10 to 1. A cooperational arrangement between towns/territories likely are needed as individual towns and territories will be required to guarantee loans. We've all got to be in on this together. The FCC has data regarding the dead zones. Now, Tim McCaffrey, who is one of the members of Broadband, suggested that the build-out in rural settings could be up to $18,000 per mile roughly, which, as Renee quickly said, is less than it costs to pay for roads, and various other things that we quickly, okay, to do. Tim and Don suggested the committee talk with the DBU, which is the Down East Broadband Utilities Organization, as a first step. The DBU will obtain the financing the town and territories would guarantee. Three years, I've just told you. Renee was going to talk about it tonight, but she's not here, so I'm going to talk about it. I think we, in going forward, we have to look forward to this as a really long-term infrastructure. It's going to be over a long period of time. You're not going to get it paid back right away, but, in fact, it will be paid back in the long term.
It's still hard lines, though. It's all, it's not wireless at all, it's all...
It's, it's a fiber optic. Yeah. Anything else, Denise? I can't...
I think you hit the highlight. The fiber part is probably the important part, because the general feeling with the many discussions that we have is that cable will be going away, and the wireless connections just won't have the power to do what people are going to want to do. Looking forward, moving forward. So they, the wireless connections just don't have that capacity.
And it's going to be above or below ground?
The utility has permission to use the poles. There was new legislation that allows them to use the poles, so they now have a place where they can bring the fiber from the poles.
He was very specific about his place, our place, the broadband place on the poles, because it's all, you know, stratified, right? You know, the top, you know? So he was very clear that he does have a place, he will have a place.
How far is it come so far in Washington County? Where is it?
It goes right up 1 Route 1.
So it's, is that where those huge...
Yes, yes.
Wires are, right there by the school?
So now, and, and it was interesting, because Gretchen Mead was there at the meeting, and they were saying she has got to get an incredible amount of broadband where she is right now, because she's right there at the... Yeah, and she said, well, I've been wondering why people were complaining, because I'm getting this very good stuff. But the further away you get from Route 1, the less you get.
But it has to be wireless directly into your house, correct?
Yes.
10 by 1 is the minimum guarantee?
Yes.
That's the minimum required. So if you're less than that, then it's likely you could get grant funding, or money from the government. But if you, if you're at that level, that's considered okay. So the, like, this is what we're told. We haven't looked at that.
Right, so someone, someone who is a resident using a wired service through phone, so it's still that old, I think, for the most part, copper twisted pair stuff...
Yep.
They're not getting 10.
No.
No.
No. And that's what has been pointing, but we've seen a few maps, one from Spectrum and one from Consolidated, and they, they have the highlights of where the service, pocket, where the service less pockets are.
Yeah, because they're...
Yeah.
I believe their hubs are, their hubs are three miles consolidated, or about three miles apart. And the further from that hub, and...
The less...
The less service you get. And I'm just saying minimum 10 by 1, because, you know, for instance, Spectrum through its fiber, I only, I think they start at the 100. I mean, I don't think they offer anything lower.
Well, let's see, I, one of the, the man that we spoke with said 100 would be like standard, everyone would know.
Right, right. Okay, yeah, so you have, and then the other one I'd be curious about is the hub, because that's a key component for people working in a area such as this, that they'd also be able to send their information out, and so that the up speed is, is very important.
Right. So they're saying up and down is...
I mean, just as an example, you couldn't upload a, a new book or novel and have it sent out very quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Lawrence.
That's right.
Well, thank you. And your next plan, the next stage is...
Well, the next thing is to talk to Stephanie McLaughlin, and we will probably have to send in a, is it CFP?
A request for proposal.
A request for...
Our thing.
I, I'm losing the jargon now. The request for proposal, yeah. And we will carry on that. But also, we need to make sure that Dean Preston pulls in Edmonds, all the rest of them, so that we can work together as he will.
So it's not a house-by-house commitment, it's just a town commitment for the...
Yes. Yeah, because we're doing, yeah, yeah. And Dean seemed very enthusiastic by the end of the meeting. He, he was somewhat hesitant when he came in, but I think by the time he left, he was good. And, uh...
But it's all the citizens, so that he has all of, like, the co- grown and everybody, not just the, the access areas.
Yeah, and because of the nature of the fiber, because it goes kind of in a circular thing, it makes it much better, the wide, the larger the area. So hopefully, we'll get everybody on board with this.
And also, the nice thing with fiber, generally speaking, is when it's in a loop, so if something goes down...
Yes.
The feed then tries to come in...
Yes.
The other side of the street, if there isn't the other side of the street.
Yeah.
So generally, a break with fiber is the, on that actual, between the two poles.
That's right.
Because it can come in from each end, so it helps service as well.
Pretty exciting.
It's very exciting. It's all of a sudden, it's got very exciting.
So your next, Ed, next meeting?
We haven't, we haven't called the next meeting until we hear from Dean, and there's a fellow in Cutler that we need to get all the members of those little unorganized territories to come in and talk. And then we will probably have Don and Tim back again, and they will be most anxious to come and talk to the town meeting. We were, Renee was talking about perhaps presenting it to the town in August? Is that the town meeting, the big town meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, that by then, we might have Tim and Don come and talk to the whole town.
At the annual town meeting?
Yep.
Is that a good idea, Julian?
Yeah, I would think you'd get the most exposure...
Yeah.
At the big, you know, at the, the annual town meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's...
And after all, we're having pizza at that meeting.
Oh, will you stop?
There is, there will be a request for a lot of money, but it'll come in the term of the loan, so it won't call back on, you know, the, the taxpayer unless they're going to buy into the broadband.
So the user...
So it comes to their monthly.
The user would...
They're all...
Pay.
Yes, yes, exactly.
What will that have, what will that do to the people that are already here, Spectrum and Consolidated? How does that, how does that affect their business?
Your bill will go up. Did he say about 50...
Is it going to be serviced through them?
Yeah, it's, Riverside Electric has picked up the power base, and from there, you could still choose Spectrum, broadband, or whatever you want.
So we're going to get it from Spectrum or Consolidated, it's not another company?
Yeah, yeah.
But they may also bring Axiom, for example, or Pioneer, so you have, you got a little bit of a competitive level in there, so you could choose your service provider.
But it's all coming from the same fiber optics, correct? The same source?
Right. It's just that, it's just that right now, when you only have one...
You only have Spectrum or you only have Consolidated, yeah.
Spectrum, for instance, isn't going to come down north of Quebec and then go off to a side street, because the return of investment's just too big. So if you've got some more funding, hey, hey, don't go north of Quebec.
Well, very good, thank you very much.
Okay, Dixie, then I...
That's a good job.
A big job.
Very good. I'm glad you're focused on something important like that. Excellent.
And you're going to be at the Fisherman's Forum next week.
I am. I'm going, actually, to the governor's office on Wednesday. Going to meet with the senior planner, the senior planner.
Would you ask for a pardon from you, please?
There's no way, you're being... You'll invite her to a pizza party?
I'll stand up for you.
Alright, on that note, let's see, Washington Street Sidewalk Update. Sidewalk. I'm not quite sure. I think they're just about to, to put it out to bid, is what Renee had told me, but I think that we could read this letter, since we're also interested in the sidewalk project. I'm writing this letter to provide an explanation of work completed for the month of December at the request of the main DOT. We are to provide the town with an invoice in our letter outlining work completed each month, regardless of whether work was completed. For the month of December, we made revisions to the final plans and specs based on comments by the MDOT, and any further comments or requests from the DOT are considered outside of our contracts, so we will be contacted you prior to the beginning of the work. Moving forward, you will see the revised package sent to the DOT, and when the time comes, comes assisting with the bidding phase of the project. We are in regular communication with the MDOT to ensure that they have what they need from us, as well as to monitor their progress. As always, please let us know if you have any questions. So...
I've got a question. How much more money does this one cost the taxpayers of this town to put a sidewalk on a state road?
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, this, this project started prior to anyone sitting here on the board.
I'm aware of that, but...
And...
Sounds to me like they want more money again.
When, a little bit of history, I believe it was projected to cost $200,000. We voted as a town to set aside $40,000 as the 20% match for the grant. Since then, three, four years have gone by, and prices have gone up, and the projection of the cost for building the sidewalks and getting all the rights of ways, et cetera, from the engineer is, I believe, $350,000, which would be $70,000 to us at 20%. Since there was questions going forward with the project and concerns for the citizens, I called the DOT, and I asked them what would be the ramifications of, of pulling out of the full sidewalk project if we chose to, and they have spent, at this point in time, approximately $70,000. So we will just, if we were to do that and not go forward, we will just not have a sidewalk. So at thi, at this point, we just hopefully cap it off at no more than what they've said and, and go forward. So stand if you do, or dand if you don't. So if we want a sidewalk, we pretty much spent the money.
When you get stuck with engineers, they're just going to keep billing you, going to bill in you, going to bill in you.
Well, there's supposed to be someone overseeing the bills, and I believe the project manager in this case is Renee. She's supposed to be reviewing the bills. She and I both went to the DOT project manager training in Augusta. It's very rigorous, and it, it does include overseeing the engineering bills.
So we could ask if there's any...
So the box stops there.
Any update from her at that time?
I think we should definitely get an update from Renee as to what, what, where money is being spent, but it's not all engineer money. The, the confusion there is, you might get a bill from the engineers for $12,000, but what you don't know is DOT has been billing this grant for the past two or three years. Anytime they've done any site work or come out, done any right-of-way work, they're also billing the grant, and we don't necessarily see that bill, so it's...
For their own sidewalk on the state road. Okay, I got it. I understand.
So, would you like to be appointed as selectman and a liaison to this project, Jason? That would be fantastic. I'd love to have you oversee that because I worked on that garage and I learned a lot doing the garage with you.
And we saved a lot of money.
We sure did. We actually, well, we saved about $15,000. But would you like to be privy to this information going forward as to how it's, how the money's being spent? Because you really are knowledgeable about.
Yep, I'll do it. I'll work with them.
Okay, great. Should we make a little motion that we do have Jason do?
Yes, I'm sure you should be part of this.
I think it's awesome.
Great idea.
Yeah, because I think since the beginning of this, we've been nickel and dime to death. And it's like, it's elusive, you know, nobody takes hold of it. And, yeah.
We're into it for $70,000 now in karma.
Right. So second, Julian?
Yes.
All in favor? Okay, so we will have Renee give you all of the invoices and also the contact person for the DOT, the MDOT, so you can communicate directly with them.
Oh, you love me.
Because normally you see they're all together at the sweatboard, but we've just empowered you. And I think, you know, she's got her hands full and you really have a lot of knowledge about construction that would really help the town. Okay, where are we up to now? Census. Census letter. Census letter. All right, that's what was going on with the census. Right, we got another lovely letter from the Census people. This is a voluntary census. How do you feel about, it was difficult to do the mandatory census. Do you feel that we should do a voluntary census? The Census Bureau wants us to do, it's voluntary, I believe. It's not, it's not, I don't believe it's part of the 10-year normal.
We got a flyer that I think is out in the office somewhere, kind of, about, from the Census. So that if you want to become a census taker, you know, to go around and get the census, you just need to apply.
I think this is a survey beyond.
Unless this is something else.
It's vital to the 2020 census, but I don't think it's the census. So I guess we had a very difficult time getting the census completed the last time, I believe. So how do we, yes, if we can get volunteers, fine, but who's been, who's been volunteering?
I volunteered. I actually liked doing it.
Did you do it?
Yeah, I, if, this is what we're talking about. You go, you know, you meet, it was when I first retired here. And I had areas to go and knock on the door. And there were, there was a questionnaire and we were given one of these little GPS things, which absolutely did not work. And so that was the biggest problem. But I got to meet a lot of people in Quebec. I got to learn a lot about Quebec. And there is really good vital information to be had.
Maybe it would be helpful to do this so that we associate the federal government allocates more than $675 billion in federal funding for health, welfare, infrastructure, and of course, we need an infrastructure.
It helps for the demographics of this town, that, you know, you get a feel for how old the population. Ten, ten years ago.
No, we had to, we did it again like last year for a grant. We had to update it. We had to update the survey.
What happened is when we applied for one of the grants last year, they denied us due to the average income of every household was $27,000. And my hair stood on end. And I said, we need to go through this again because there's nobody in this town that makes that kind of money. So we went through.
We did it, we did a sampling, 10%. Yes, we did it.
And who and where did they come up with that figure?
Yeah, they had come up with a random.
No one told us where.
Yeah, no, it was a random sampling. And we had determined, now that you mentioned it, that it was not the average person. Many people that they picked were either summer people or people who had retired here and with a, you know, handsome income. And it was not typical of the Quebec citizen.
So maybe this BAS, BAS voluntary, voluntary survey is important to get the input. Because we are going for a federal grant.
Right.
So we do need to do this.
And that portrays us way above.
This, this one does?
Our median income is nowhere close to $27,000.
So do we want to volunteer and do it again so we can reach out to the, you know, to the, a proper section of people?
If they do it, it will be countywide. And there will be sections to do it. And you get your little blank and you get your map and you walk around.
You want to walk into this and report back in two weeks?
This actually refers to, do you know when Donald Trump wanted to put on the questionnaire, are you an alien or are you a citizen, you know, whatever that was.
Yeah, I would, I would say if you want to just be, is this smoke or is this the bullet point of responding to the BAS? BAS ensures your local government receives the funds for which it is entitled.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Is that just a tagline or is this something that actually?
Well, we, we, we. It happens every 10 years. And it's how the federal government does the demographic of your town. And so if they, their, if federal contracts are to be given to towns in need, that's what will happen. If you have a population over a certain age or under a certain age, that comes into play. In addition to the income.
So what is the recommendation of the board?
Take advantage of it, yes.
So go, so who is going to volunteer to do this?
Well, what they do, I think we as a group say yes, we'll do it.
More specifically, I mean, what, is this another sampling or is this a, again, another physical door-to-door?
Yeah, it's, it's a, you're just agreeing to have this happen, you know, that.
But we don't think to do it?
No, no, no.
Okay. So you want me, they addressed it to me, so I guess I better go on here.
Yeah.
And with your guidance and vote, you want me to go ahead and say yes to this?
Don't forget that BAS is a voluntary survey. Yeah.
All right, so let's have a motion.
I shall move that we participate in this.
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right then. Thank you.
One question. How are we going to be certain that they don't do the same thing as sampling?
That's what she's going.
Like, you know, okay.
I want to know how, how they take a sample.
All right.
It can't be a random sample.
No, it needs to be.
You have to have a typical sample.
Right.
Yeah.
So I would say family-oriented. No retirees, no people from a, I'm not saying.
A typical family of four or five.
I'm not pointing out people from away as saying that they have a lot of money. But I'm saying a typical young family in this town.
Yeah, you want mom, dad, or mom and, and/or dad with the kids and that kind of thing.
Right.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Or seasonal, families, seasonal worker.
Not retirees, not.
Why don't we ask the parameters of the survey? Because it might have to be, if they pick people that live here full-time, then they're not going to get the high salaries.
Yeah, and I.
And maybe they can't.
And the 60 units of low-income housing that we have should be included. That's right.
And I think that in the last census, we were given, there were, there were certain houses that we did not go to because those people, perhaps if they were summer people, would vote in the town that they came from, not here. So that they, we would not take that sample.
Right, I'm the first criteria.
So you would have to be, you're talking about being a registered voter for the sample. Well, that, that takes away some of the seasonal people because who may be more well-off since this is their second.
And it also speaks to people who decide not to vote. That this is a reason for them to change their mind and vote.
Okay. You register people to vote when you.
Well, I, I put a bid in for, you know. I mean, I do say if you choose not to vote, then you deserve every bad government you get.
Oh, right then.
Oh, right then.
Let's rear this one back here.
Tell us how you really feel. No, I mean, really, if you don't participate in your government.
You have to be a voice, yeah.
All right, WWT, the wastewater treatment plant upgrade DEP grant submitted by Oliver. Let's see what that is. I actually have the whole thing here, but we didn't copy all this. But I do have, if you want to view this, the grant application, let's see what the letter says. It came in this week. On behalf of the town of Quebec, we are submitting the test application for state grant funding of the town's pumping station and wastewater treatment plant upgrade in July of 2016. Oliver Associates Inc. completed a study of the treatment facility and pumping station. That report identified the scope of work included in this project. Due to the small user population, significant grant funds will be needed to allow the project to proceed. We appreciate the department's consideration and this funding. Should you have any questions, let us know. So it looks like they've done some significant work on this grant. I can certainly appreciate that.
I think we're very impressive when we can.
Well, I think they know their business, it looks to me like, total project cost. So I'm just trying to see what they actually asked for. See here right now, current equivalent dwelling unit sewer usage rate. And that's something we don't have on this, we don't have the sewer rate on this meeting today, not here. But we're, we're going to visit raising it because it's low for the surrounding area. And part of getting grants has to do with the percentage of the rate according to the average income. Back to your point.
So that, right, so that.
Back to your point, so they may be too high.
Any grant is going to be affected by that median income.
Absolutely.
And, you know, they're going to look at that $27,000 and say, see you later. That's right. Our esteemed governor just let go $55 million and part of it was for this. So maybe when we get into, submit this, maybe we'll be okay.
Yeah, that's what's needed.
She seems more determined than we expected.
Infrastructure.
Seems to be.
No, it's $5 million in the bank.
That's where she can, where she got the money from.
No, thank you. So we're in other business. We did get a late letter just today from Stephanie Page. Dear Selectmen, if we regret, I must submit my resignation from the Quebec AOS Facilities Ad-Hoc Committee. The meeting time selected by the other committee members is not agreeable with my work schedule. I appreciate your support in appointing me to this committee. I believe my experience as a former Board of Directors and SAD 19 Board of Director and as well as the former AOS 77 Board Chair would have been useful to the committee and the town. It's very Stephanie Page. What, shall we do with that resignation? I know that they started once at six o'clock. Will you have a member of the committee who would like to maybe explain?
Well, no, it's everybody, four o'clock works best for everybody except one person. And so we wanted to be inclusive, we had it at six o'clock. And again, we set it up for six o'clock the next time. And everybody rearranged all their schedules. Again, you know, this person didn't show up after we rearranged our schedules. So they said, hey, you know, if it's not going to show up, then we're accommodating them. We need, you know, we're going to go back to what works best for the group. Because the attendance was, the attendance was the issue, why I went back to the majority of who it worked for. So if you're trying to accommodate the person and they don't show up, then we're right.
That's right.
So that's, that was the only reason. Every attempt was made. And that was the last meeting. And that, then we got this.
So, shall we accept the resignation?
I hate to think that we would lose her expertise. She has been, she has been on that since the war go. When they first in Augusta came up with this AOF, Stephanie, Barbara, myself, we were the first ones. And I had never seen esports so much in my life as that first year. We were there every week. And, I mean, I just hate to lose her expertise, that's all.
So is the. I know that.
But if she, you know, she feels that.
I tried to talk with her and she had called and I did not get ahold of her. So I know that we made a big, kind of a big deal about making sure it wasn't six. So the people who worked to be part of it. And then that information came to me that it started with six.
I myself was very instrumental in, in, in looking into this. But I have talked to a lot of different people, Paul Terry, me and Juan. And he's, you know, I, he just really feels and we all, and I do myself, I've backed off. I really think it's going to cost us more money in the long run to get out. So I've kind of backed up and that's why. Because I really was instrumental in this.
Stephanie Page was in charge of the cost analysis. And we were expecting that cost analysis to come up at the, their.
I, I just really think that.
Did anybody speak, speak with her about where the cost analysis was?
Not sure.
What's going at that meeting?
We all, we all had our own part.
Was that meeting at four or six?
Six.
That was the six.
That was the six. And we all had, we were in for the assignments.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, and we all had our assignments that we were supposed to get the initial information on. And the cost analysis was, she had volunteered to do that part. And so we were missing that part for that meeting. So we don't.
I mean, I'd still like to think that if, if, currently at the, in frequency of the, of the meetings and it's an ad hoc, that if she would be willing at least to the information that, due to her expertise, but also due to her professional life, then maybe it's just, if the information were there or something that she gave, she doesn't necessarily have to be there. I mean, there are extenuating circumstances. And, and, yeah, no one said, so I'd like to at least see if there's an opportunity for her not to resign. But just say, look, this, you don't have to be at this at four o'clock with your expertise. We still prefer you to have input from you. And on occasion, and on occasion as we go, if we're up to a subject that's deemed necessary, that we try to get everybody.
Who was voting chair of the committee?
Sonia.
Sonia.
Sonia Bailey. I know that on my part for the special education, there was, there was actually significant cost reduction of some of the services and more services to this. I'm not sure about the other areas. My part was the, to look into special ed, OT, speech, but.
Who's delegated to do the cost analysis now that Stephanie resigned?
We didn't know that until just now.
Well, why don't we do that? It's a week.
Yeah, it was just.
Do it next week.
So we can reach out to Sonia and see if.
I think someone has to reach out to Stephanie.
Well, it should, it should be Sonia, see if.
Well, it should be, yes, the committee chair.
Yeah, because it was just the one time, I don't know.
How many times have you met? Twice?
We met twice. And we were always going to meet at six o'clock and then.
Did you meet both times at six o'clock?
Yes. And when everybody was presenting their ones, yeah, everybody was presenting except Stephanie.
But you haven't met at four at all yet?
Never.
No.
No, this is next meeting at four, next week.
Well, I think that we, I think we make a motion to table the, accepting her resignation until the chair can speak with her. She seems like an extremely vital asset to the AOS Ad-Hoc Committee. Something we, we would encourage the committee to work with her in a capacity so that she can at least be at a meeting or two to help.
That sounds a lot better than what I said.
I rehearse. She knows somebody who could step in, you know, and, and.
Well, nobody wanted to exclude her.
No, no, I just said.
That was never the point, but I am meeting at six.
I'm sure that she doesn't want to resign, but she hasn't, but she has been involved in the schools for a long time.
But as an ad hoc.
So she may have somebody that she knows.
As an ad hoc, perhaps you could have Sonia just contact her and say, look, you don't need to be there in respect that you can't do to your professional duties. But if you would still like to continue to working with the organization and the committee to try to get the best information possible.
Or, or she decides that she will be there at six o'clock and will not miss a meeting. And then I believe our point, we do oversee all the committees. And one of the letters was sent to the Select Board.
If she can make it six o'clock, that'd be fine. But no, let us know so we can be at four o'clock.
I, I agree. I agree that she, she should have a chance to have a meeting, stay at six, another chance and bring the cost analysis and to express to her that she's, she is definitely a vital part of bringing history, being, being all the decisions she's had.
And she might feel that she wants to get done anyway.
Yeah.
Or she just might just want to be done.
Right, right, and if she does, then we have to acknowledge that, right?
But I'd like to give, give the committee, as Dan said, a couple of weeks to see if anything can be worked out with her.
I haven't heard it before, but she contacted Sonia.
Yeah, I will make a motion to table that, do it next week.
And we give the letter to Sonia.
Yeah.
Share the letter with Sonia. All right. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, any updates?
Well, we could start then with the ad hoc is, I think it, you know.
I think it's Wednesday at four.
Yeah, it sounded like Facebook, that's the only thing.
It's either Tuesday or Wednesday at four. I'm pretty sure it's Wednesday.
I'm pretty sure it was Tuesday.
It's Wednesday, the 27th at four.
Wednesday, okay.
You have committee on there.
And while I have the floor, revolving loan is Tuesday, March 10. There we go, you got it. I get it? You got it. And that's at three o'clock. Yeah, got it.
So did we do, Shuttles Fish is March 4th, first Monday of the month at six. The Harbor Board, did you do Harbor Board, Roman?
Nope.
It's a.
The 25th.
Yes, it's going to be, that's the fourth Monday because of the holidays, right?
At six o'clock.
At six. And the following month, the safe harbor is going to be at March 18th at five, right before, going back to the Harbor Board being the third Monday of the month. So if there's something we want to tell the Harbor Board, we're going to have, or you want to come to our meeting, we're going to have a big update about this thing that has been going on at Safe Harbor. So it's on the same night. And did you do revolving? Did you do the revolving? AOS Ad-Hoc is supposed to be, well, let's just see when this is going to be. I won't announce that because maybe it'll be at six.
Yeah, I don't have anything to do with seven to eight times.
All right then, public comment?
I would just like to pass along my appreciation to Ricky and his crew during the last snowstorm and hopefully the next one too. They did a remarkable job of keeping streets open, including what I believe should be the most difficult hill in the village. The lower end of Monument Street was impassable the whole time. So kudos to Ricky.
Yes.
I will tell you, I had, I traveled a little bit around and our roads are always the best.
They are. During periods, I was like, oh, my golly, stay in Quebec.
The free boards have done great.
As soon as you turn off on 189 and start coming in, it just keeps getting better and better. Yeah, it's true.
They work so hard and it's such a good sanding and everything else.
And this has been a terrible year. And I will point out, I was in Pembroke and they have run out of sand three times already. They used their 2,500 yards and they're on their second 2,500 yards.
Pembroke purchased sand twice. We've never done that before.
It's been that kind of winter. We needed sand.
We have, we didn't have to get more sand.
We didn't have to get more sand.
Not this year, no.
At the apartment.
They're holding the line.
Yeah, it's nothing, it's all mix, mix, mix.
Well, yeah, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I, I, you, you second? All in favor?